Did you believe what he said, that there was no comparison on the bid list? That's how you couldn't see it?
They're not supposed to give you bid list.
No quotes.
They're not supposed to give you quotes. They're supposed to give you one price to do each job. You either pay here or leave. That was the agreement. That's how you run a design-build agreement. The guy that's supposed to do the design build gives you a price. You say you like it, you don't. Or you gotta negotiate.
I like some.
Okay. All right, we're getting ready to get started. Are you ready, City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
City Manager?
Always.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Mervin?
The call is special meeting of the City of Pohokee Friday, April the thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six oh four P. M. to order. May we please stand for the invocation led by Commissioner Everett, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry to delay.
Okay.
Shall we pray? Father in heaven, we come before your presence humbled, but with great confidence. We come because we have a great concern for our city and her future. Our desire is to see Pohokee become a city and community of choice. A city that is progressing, a city that is filled with prosperity and with a great hope and future. So God, we consider ourselves blessed to be entrusted with the great responsibility of seeing that our city gets everything that she deserves. So God, we pray that you will guide our efforts, that we can have the wisdom to change the things that we can, the courage to do those things. So God, help us throughout this meeting to do what is in the best interest of her citizens. In this, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Vab.
Present.
Commissioner Everett.
Here.
Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Mur- Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, staff, and thank you to you all for being here tonight to participate in our special Commissioner- Commissioner meeting of Friday, April the thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The purpose of this special meeting was called to discuss the Techno Marine contract and the City Commission Authority, as well as the City Manager Authority and Record Retention. At this time, I would like to recognize our special guest, our legislative aide to Mayor McKinley, Lisa Wilson. Thank you for coming, Ms. Wilson. And also, we have a privilege to introduce Mrs. Brandonberg, our City Attorney wife. I think our attorney been our attorney for about ten years now, and it's the first opportunity we've had to meet Ms. Brandonberg. Thank you, ma'am, and hope that you will return at some time in the future. I'm gonna turn just this portion over as far as the topic to our City Attorney to give us- I'll let the City Manager go first. Give us some, just some preliminary on the Techno Marine agreement, where we are, why we're here today, and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, citizens, visitors, thank you for coming out. Purpose of this special meeting tonight is to discuss the progress of the agreement with Techno Marine and to decide on a way forward here for this renovations here at the Marina. It's nice to see everyone out. Hopefully, Gary, I can get you and your wife to dinner before seven. But, so that's the purpose of the night, is to discuss the progress and a way forward here for the City of Pohokee. We had some passionate exchanges on Tuesday evening, and so here we are tonight, moving forward here. And I'm not gonna repeat anything I've said from Tuesday night. I think my review of where we are is where we are, and that's black and white. And that's pretty much all I have to say tonight, is we need to find a way forward. And I'm gonna move as the commission provides my direction tonight.
Thank you, City Manager. I turn this now over to our City Attorney to kind of lead us in this contract agreement that was originally signed, I believe, on, appears to be in January of two thousand and eighteen. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. You have several items in your backup. The first item maybe you should draw your attention to is a full copy of the grant agreement that we finally got from, well, after having gone through several sources, we finally got a copy of this. We'll talk about that more later under records retention. You also have a copy of the Techno Marine contract that the board approved in January twenty-second of two thousand and sixteen. It lays out seven tasks that Techno Marine was supposed to accomplish for the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The contract does not provide any completion dates on any of those seven tasks. However, Techno Marine was, in fact, aware of the town counties times crunch. Since that time, they've provided us, you'll see, backup showing some work that they've done at the Marina. You'll see a cover plan view showing depths and so forth at the Marina. You'll see the, a sketch, a preliminary sketch of the dock, the fishing dock, some specifications for it. You'll also see a variety of other specification for building the dock, pictures of other docks similar to this that they've built in the past, more specifications. And then you'll see on page one of thirty-six, a master schedule of the campground and Marina, of when they anticipating getting everything completed. It shows the last thing, I think, being completed on seven, six, eighteen. Shows locations of camera sites for the security system and areas that they would cover. Then you also go to April eleventh letter, which is a letter written by Mr. Ryan Miller to one of their other employees, directing his response to my questions. And what is their lump sum for each of the items in addition to those seven tasks to be completed? And you'll see that there is a, an amount, it is a fixed amount, to complete those items. It includes all materials, I believe, and their overhead and profit. And they claim they can have all these done on time and on schedule. So going down their list, we see a lump sum amount of forty-one thousand dollars to provide install a one thousand two hundred and fifty gallon grease trap and various other things with regard to that. For a lump sum of nine thousand eight hundred dollars, they'll clean, apply two coats of seal coat over the area of approximately ninety-three thousand square feet, re-stripe and repaint the existing painted surfaces. If you want a different type of material, they've given you an option for a poly fortified heavy duty sealer. And I believe it's gonna cost three thousand two hundred dollars more. Then for the lump sum of a thousand five hundred, they'll install various signs and posts to be completed in two weeks. And for a guaranteed maximum price of sixty thousand dollars, they'll do all testing, repairs, replacement of tanks, pumps, hoses required to make the fuel system operable. There's also a possibility that if they don't have to replace something in the fuel system, that price will go down by five thousand dollars. For item number five, they're going to provide safety, vertical safety rail around the entire Marina break wall, which, as you know, right now is a dangerous thing without the handrails in place. And then for the lump sum of seven thousand nine hundred dollars, they're gonna pressure clean all sidewalks, knee walls, restrooms, and Marina area, and paint various areas. They indicate the type of paint and when they'll be done, which will be two weeks from their notice to proceed. And for the lump sum of thirty-six thousand dollars, they'll install, in accordance with those pictures that we talked about earlier, one sixteen channel DVR, one thirty-two channel DVR, backup packs, hard drives, twenty-seven HD cameras, fifteen HD vertical focal cameras, three pan tilt zoom light cameras, and mounting using the existing analog cable. And then there was a bunch of trimming and landscaping that the city wanted them to look at, included trimming a hundred and twenty-nine Sago palms, forty-three Royal palms, remove and replace unhealthy plant material, three Royal palms, thirty cocoa plums, kill and clean existing landscape beds, install fifty-five pallets of sod, repair and replace needed, and reprogram existing landscape irrigation system. In other words, fix your irrigation system. Forty-eight thousand dollars. So these are the items that they have presented to you tonight for your consideration. Now, with respect to the hundred and fifty thousand the city already gave them, they have indicated that of that, twenty-five thousand dollars have been spent. The other twenty, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is in their bank account, and they believe will be necessary to do the permitting with the Corps of Army Engineer on both the deck and permitting for the pier. The pier needs quite a bit more permitting. The deck is probably gonna be an easier item to permit with the Army Corps of Engineers. However, if those prices of those permitting requirements become easier, those amounts would go down. So as far as Techno Marine is concerned, they believe they have a contract, they believe that it is underway, that they have given the city the prices requested, and have shown the city they can complete it on time. Now, with regard to the pier, that is not gonna be engineered and completed in that timeframe. That's a project that is going to be done at a later date, and the city may decide at a later time not even to build the pier. And with regard to the deck itself, I believe they're waiting on some materials with regard to the deck. Sir, could you come up to the microphone?
Listen here.
Could you, could you just tell the board where you are on the deck pricing?
First of all, good evening. Thank you for attending this. My name's Eric Sanderson. I'm actually the owner of Techno Marine Group, which is the parent company international of Techno Marine Construction. So it just so happens I have to, happen to be in the area this week. So I have not, I will tell you in advance, I have not been involved in this project. But in the last two weeks, I've quickly gotten up to speed for the most part. Far as the deck, it, since it sits on core property, what I'm told by our staff is that it doesn't have to go through the long period cycle of permitting. That is probably just a waiver by the Corps once they see the drawings. And typically, we, we're doing a project similar to that right now in Texas, and we're able to get back to a one thirty days. So where we are on the pricing of the deck, we have two bids coming in Monday. They may have come in this afternoon, but they come in Monday. One from a local firm and one from a firm out of West Palm Beach. So we don't have the pricing on the deck as we speak.
As I indicated earlier, in a design-build contract, the contractor doesn't give the city the bids they receive from subcontractors. That's very abnormal for them to do that, or for the city to ask for it. A design builder designs the item that you have requested them to design. They give you what they think you need, and they give you a price on it. And then you decide whether you like that price or not. And if you don't like the price, you either negotiate with them and ask them to make changes to it and change their price, or you don't let them do it. So this is where we are with this contractor. So this contractor has said, we're gonna do what you asked us to do, and we're gonna finish the job on time. And these are the budget amounts, all of which, I believe, if you add up, they look to me like they're well within your budget. And well within the budget that was given to the state of Florida. So now you have to make a decision tonight. I guess you should look at what information, if any, that you have that these prices are not good prices, and what information you have, if any, that they can't complete the schedule on time. And then determine, if you find that to be the case, then you can say, hey, we don't want you to do this contract anymore. If you don't have any evidence supporting those positions, then you should let them complete the job.
Okay, I recognize Commissioner Hill, you have a question?
No, go ahead, go ahead. I'll wait.
At this time, what I do is open up the floor for commissioners to ask some questions, get some clarification. After that, we're gonna get the recommendation of the City Attorney and the City Manager, what they feel we should do as far as moving forward. Then we'll make a decision on moving forward. I'll just start off, a few questions. It'll be to Techno Marine. What is your completion date of completing the entire process?
Yes, they do. It's on page one of thirty-eight, and one thirty-eight has a schedule on it.
We look at the master schedule. I want to verify our operation made. I confirmed with all of the subs, most of them being local subs, but qualified local subs. The design phase, in order to submit for the Army Corps of Engineers department, there's seven TPCs that you have to send to. For the deck, and, well, not the deck, but for the pier, is within ten days, ten days total. We just need you to sign off on the concept. And we've got enough information from our in-house engineering department to be able to submit that to the Corps. Now, that's not gonna be completed by the end of July. The Corps could take up to a year. They have the right to take up to ninety-eight just to review while we submit it. That's why if you look at the very last item on page thirteen, you see that based on feedback from the Corps, and based on feedback from our subconsultant, Bill Saville, the City of Earth's father, that the approval for the pier could be as late as February of next year by the Corps. Therefore, if we received the approval, then we would finish building the pier by the middle of April. But I'm not sure. You know, the Corps, I've seen them take six months, I've seen them take three months.
Mayor, can I have a quick point of order?
Yes, sir.
I wanna help him out a little bit.
Okay.
City of Pohokee just received an additional almost million dollars for phase two for the Marina. I long ago removed the pier from this phase, so you can subtract that from your timeline.
Okay.
At this time, it's already been approved by D E O to move into the second phase.
That's fine.
So that should help you out with your timeframe.
Yeah, we should, yeah, that does help out. We should probably do, I heard that we were, just looking here at this stuff, so bear with me. We were approved of the agreement in January, but what I have is mid-February.
Mid-February?
Yeah. And it still has the, unless there's been a deductive line item, if that's necessarily the case, Mr. Wilson, which I assume it is, I apologize if my guys aren't here now, then we should probably take it out of the addendum that you issued us two months ago, 'cause it's still in there, the line item. Okay, so we, we probably need to do some paperwork there. Far as the, just so we're all on the same page. Far as sort of design and submitting, if you wanted us to move forward with that, even though it's out of this particular one point two million dollars, would be ten days. Far as the restrooms laundry repair, you look at completion of that, all of that, and it includes, it's itemized here, by June the sixth.
June the sixth, okay.
Yep, June the sixth. That includes handrails, gutters, eaves, pressure washroom, exterior painting of the buildings, wire and piping installation, signage, et cetera. The second task, which is a critical task, is the fence security gating and the Marina handrail. Middle of June, June thirteenth. You see the bottom line, fabricate, install. July fifth, outside completion date. The petroleum upgrades to the fuel system, to have it in order, May thirtieth, outside date. The prefabricated restrooms, this is just based on the vendor that has the best price and seems to be the most qualified. Can't have those here until August the seventh. Although I am told that we're trying to fast track that, and if so, it will be July fifteenth. The landscaping, if approved, the middle of May, May sixteenth. And the parking lot, the existing parking, not the new parking associated with the pier, middle of May. Excuse me, let me take that back, May twenty-third. Five each from today.
Let me just go back, try City Manager, hearing those dates and timelines, would those meet our grant requirement? And I don't know, you haven't, I don't believe, given us a timeframe from when the grant to expect in these projects to be met. I know we have this additional money. We're trying to spend this money that we received in two thousand seventeen completed. But there was a problem that we felt that the vendor wasn't fulfilling the contract obligation. But going back to looking at the contract, there really wasn't any timelines on any of these items where we can say that they're in default of their contract. It wasn't any whatsoever in these seven items that they're referring to. And now they have timelines put in here. I'm just asking you as a city manager, would this meet the requirement without jeopardizing the grant funding?
Yeah, if it was true.
Okay.
But it's not. We, the city of Pohokee, has an agreement with DEO to have this done by July first. Not August, when they're bringing in more materials. Not thereafter. That's just fact. That's our agreement with DEO. We did have an agreement with Techno Marine, which, they knew that timeline as well, to complete these projects.
Was it in the contract, the original contract, the timeline? Did they have to have it completed? I know a lot of contracts have...
They read our agreement like I read it. I've sat down with Techno Marine Jatt on numerous occasions and had that conversation. He's not here tonight to admit that, because for the last two critical meetings, they sent me somebody new. I've never seen you before. The last meeting I had with Techno Marine, they sent another guy. He knew nothing about the project. Now you show up, you know very little, to be honest. So you're a new guy to me. You have had no conversations with the city of Pohokee whatsoever. So I can't, you know, in all good conscience, you know, understand why Techno Marine keeps sending me new guys. And the guy that I've been dealing with for, I don't know, eight months? Nine months? Won't return phone calls. So I'm going to say, after I did all the adding up of these quotes that I just got yesterday, even though we've been, my engineer and my planners have been asking for these quotes of these vendors for, going on two months from Jatt, since he got the first one fifty in February. I added all that up, that's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, including the one fifty I advanced you. Now, we got one point two million. I say hello for savings cost. I don't know where the rest of the money's going, but I appreciate that. But that seems a little well under the board of, what's your profit in if this is just four fifty? Because this doesn't look like a markup. Even though everyone says this is a markup for your profit, it's impossible for it to be a markup. It's impossible. Now, I went to school, and I know one plus one equals two. This is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not one point two. But everyone's saying this is the markup for all of these projects. That's impossible. It's impossible. Now, let's get back to the dates. Yes, what you just explained, that does meet our timeline. Mayor, Commissioner. However, it's April thirteenth. There's nothing been done, but a lot of people shoving paper in my face, saying we're going to get to it. Well, that just doesn't suffice for the city, for our engineers who've been working with Jatt and Techno Marine since January, and our planners. They've looked at these numbers, they've looked at these quotes. It doesn't add up. In fact, one of your quotes in here, that vendor's asking for an advance of almost fifty percent. We just don't do that. So, I mean, in my honest opinion, this contract is not where it should be at this timeline on August thirteenth, on April fifteenth. Now, when we got the advance given to the city, we had to send in several documents for advanced payment to be, for that one point two million to be advanced to the city of Pohokee. In those documents are timelines, which Jatt saw, where we were supposed to be in April of twenty eighteen. Almost fifty percent into construction and renovations. And by the way, let me take out the word "construction", because we ain't really constructing nothing here, now that the pier is gone. These are renovations. Painting, nuts and bolts. The pier comes in Phase Two. Okay? So let's just be real honest here. These are renovations, not construction. Not at the level that we think it should be in the build design that everyone's talking about. These are renovations, nuts and bolts. That's just reality. The amount of money we accepted, we're supposed to be fifty percent into renovations in April. We're supposed to be going into my third quarter. And on that third quarterly review, it's supposed to say fifty percent in. Not still talking about quotes or build and design, none of that. That's just reality. That's why we got the one point two million upfront. That's why they sent us that agreement over the summer, because they needed that to advance the money along with those other documents. No, we're not where we need to be. I think Techno Marine's a wonderful company. They build great decks and piers and marinas. I just have no confidence that they can build on land, I mean, do on land renovations on our timeline to please DEO by July first. That's my professional opinion. But the facts are, it's the eye test. Because apparently my opinion don't go so far beyond this diet. So the facts are, it's the eye test now. There's nothing going on at the marina. I spoke to some of these vendors that they got quotes from. I saw them directly, and you know what they said? "We can't get to work. They won't put us to work." They came back, they handed me my plans that I gave Jatt. They handed me the plans back and say, "We're done." You had three vendors do that to me in the last seven days. In fact, all of our plans for everything that was ever constructed, engineered, and designed at the marina was laying on a table at the harbor master house. Now, if you're really planning something, and you're ready to go to work, why are all the plans that you should have still sitting at the marina? Unprotected. They're in my truck now. So, I mean, we can dance around this all night. We can be here till seven o'clock. I have my answer. Techno Marine is not where we want them to be on April thirteenth. There's no renovations or upgrades happening at the marina. Again, I appreciate the diligence that Techno Marine has provided us through this process, but this contract is off course. And we need to make a decision tonight that will put us back on course. Thank you.
We are. Let me ask another question. You indicated the subcontractors had stopped working. Didn't they receive...
They never worked.
Okay. You say they had stopped, though.
Well, they were doing surveying and all the things, you know, the measurements, to give Techno Marine the quotes. But soon after that, they say they couldn't be put to work because no one had authorized them to go to work.
Currently, do Techno Marine have a cease-work order from the city saying that they are not to proceed until we give them the okay to proceed?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, my second question, I'm going to get back to Commissioner Hill because she had a question. Who authorized a hundred and fifty dollar payment to Techno Marine when we had information that most or none of the work was being done? That's a...
That wasn't for work.
...upfront payment of almost...
That wasn't for work. When you signed off to make Techno Marine, and I didn't know we were going into these, but I think we're talking about the agreement with Techno Marine, but that's fine. When we signed off and made Techno Marine the master developer and planner and renovator for this project, Techno Marine came to the city and said, "In order to get our engineering, our permitting, our build designs moving forward, we need this advance to move forward." Now, we're already on a critical timeline. So the city advanced them that money, understanding that once they received that, soon after, they would begin all of the necessary work required to hire their contractors to put us to work. That was a decision that we all made with our engineers, with our planners. However, and that was February. Since then...
When you say "we", I'm quite sure you're not including the Commissioner, because we weren't involved in that decision.
No, Mayor, let me back up here. Let me tell you how a project works. And I didn't know I had to do this tonight. When a project is awarded, and an agreement is signed, and they start going to work, we start issuing pay apps as the project moves along. I don't need to go back to the Commissioner's approval and ask for you to allow me to pay that. There's no project like that. It doesn't operate like that. Government does not operate like that. Once you sign the agreement, Techno Marine goes to work, I begin getting invoices, and we start paying those pay apps. I don't need your approval anymore. So let's get away from that subject, and let's get back on the right subject.
That's not actually true.
That is true.
No, it's not true.
Gary, every time we do road, every time we do road construction, and we have to advance money in agreement, we do pay out.
It depends on what the contract says.
We're going to let each of the staff get an opportunity to answer the question and ask a question, but we can't really talk at the same time.
Yeah, but we're here talking about our own process that we've been practicing since I've been here. We've done that on every project I've been here on.
We're going to talk about that later, because it has...
No, we're not going to talk about that, because we decided to do a special meeting on Techno Marine's agreement. Anything else on this agenda is not right. You can't talk about it, last time I checked.
I'm sorry, but the mayor called this special meeting to talk about all four of these items.
He called this special meeting for disagreement with the city.
I am very confused as to who... And who, I mean, who are we representing? No, I'm going to say this. I'm very confused as to who we're representing and who are we're most concerned about. Because the last I checked, we were representing the city of Pohokee.
The city of...
And not the city of Techno Marine.
No, hold on, hold on.
The city of Techno Marine.
Hold on, and I...
I think we're scrutinizing the wrong person.
I don't think that's necessarily true, Commissioner Everett. And let me tell you why I say that. I understand, first of all, I have a concern that the guy, well, the representative, the original Jack...
Jack.
Jack is not, Jatt is not here. That's the person that we need to be communicating with. And I understand that you have the contract or certain information available to give to us or to provide for us. That's my biggest concern right now. However, I still do understand that this is a contract. And it is a process. Because now it's almost like we're kind of stuck, not really stuck in the middle, but we have the monies out there, you have some of the funds going on. But we're not seeing any work going on. And I do know that we have paperwork. We have all these things that need to be done. My biggest concern right now is where's the communicator? Where is that person that knows, that has all the information pertaining to this? Because it's obvious that you're not familiar with it. And that's who we need to be speaking to right now, because what you're doing is going back to the contract and giving us, well, you're going back to your information and just giving us information we can find out. And I really want to, honestly, I truly want to work this out some type of way, but that's my biggest concern right now. I'm just trying to figure out why is that going on? Because at some point, and city manager, and I'm also just trying to figure out, like the mayor said, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Who was on board when all this was approved? Or I think that has a lot to do with what's going on. I don't think it's necessarily certain people getting scrutinized.
No, it doesn't.
No, certainly, I don't think it's necessarily people getting scrutinized. I don't think it's that. I think it just needs a little more transparency needs to go on, and we need to know exactly what's what. It doesn't take a genius to figure this out. If you're not willing to do the job right now, we as commissioners, we can terminate, we can go through the motion, but at the end of the day, I just want to understand you better. And I'm not understanding you because I feel as though you don't know or have all the information that we need to move forward. And I think that's the big issue right now. That's why Commissioner Everett is feeling the way he's feeling as well. It's just not clear right now.
See if I can make it... Let me pick it back off Commissioner Hill. The reason why I'm feeling the way I'm feeling right about now is because we don't see anything.
I understand that, but...
Let me finish.
But that goes on any...
Work has not started. They received a notice to proceed in December. We're almost middle of the year of twenty eighteen. And all I'm seeing and hearing and reading that has been done is secretarial, paper pushing work. Now, you may not, no one else, and I'm not saying you specifically, I'm speaking generally, may not be concerned. But what I'm most concerned about, and I believe every commissioner should have this concern, I really believe deep down inside, we're under public scrutiny. And the people want to see something. And we can tap dance from, and I've yet to have my question answered about work being started or work being done. And I'm like the city manager, a simple eye test. Walk up there at the dyke, I've walked up there, I've looked, and I've seen. I don't see anything. And our people are frustrated, because some people have been here all of their lives, some have went away and come back and have not seen progress being made. And one of the disheartening things, in my opinion, is we have a city manager that we hired. We have a city manager in whom we extended a contract to, to lead and to be a CEO of this city. And if we can't trust his advice, something is wrong.
I don't think it's necessarily not trusting his advice. I'm looking at the contract, and I know that we want to see work being done. However, in order for that work to be done, this has to be done the correct way. That's just how I feel. So I know we can go back and forth all day. I just want to know, why is it Jack, well, Jett, whatever, is not here? That's my biggest concern, because that's the person we need to be communicating with. Now, is that a red flag? Of course it is. Now, if he were, if he was here, it would be much better for us to better understand exactly what's going on. But at the end of the day, okay, now, we terminate Techno Marino. Now we have the one fifty out there. What happens next? What about the deadline? I'm just saying, I just feel that somewhere along here, the transparency wasn't, something failed somewhere, and I'm just trying to figure out where. And I don't want to just say it was just Techno Marina. I don't want to say it was just the city manager. I don't want to just say it was the city attorney. Something happened, and that's what I'm trying to figure out. Once I figure that out, I can move forward. That's my biggest concern.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill.
I just feel like we playing...
The commissioners need to be acknowledged.
Exactly. That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Mervin.
Well, Mayor, listening to all of this, and we don't have to go on all night to determine what we're going to do. We talked about it. We keep saying there's no work have been done, evidently there have not been. I wrote up there right before coming to the commission meeting. I write up there pretty much every day, every day. And I'm tired of going to the citizens, "Okay, y'all keep telling me about the marina." And now our stories are now just being repetition. We keep telling the same things, like, "Okay, y'all keep saying it." Now they're telling us, "Well, I'll believe it when I see it." Okay? So now, where we standing at tonight? We need to just go ahead on, instead of talking about it, go ahead on. I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that based on Techno Marina, the contract with them, that we will cancel the contract with Techno Marina tonight. That's my motion. And...
We want to respond to all of these questions, because I have a lot of answers.
My motion is to cancel the contract with Techno Marine and based on the cost to date, that we return the remainder of the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars within fourteen calendar days. That's my motion.
Second. It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin, improperly seconded by Commissioner Everett to cancel Techno Marine contract with the city. Call for questions. Question?
I have a question. Okay, I'll ask that question afterward.
My question. When would the contract sign?
It was a design-build contract. It was never a master contract.
So when did we give the notice to proceed?
January twenty-second is the date of the contract. I don't know when the notice...
You got the contract that's signed at January the twenty-second. I think Techno Marine indicated that they got a work to proceed around mid-February. Here we are in April. We're talking about less than ninety days.
Two months minus two weeks of work time.
Right. With a contract here in front of me with no timeline. So we're saying we're going to terminate a competent contract, and they didn't have no specific timeline when they should be completed. To me, you have justification when you have a timeline. And the timeline is used as examples, say, "This contract must be completed in ninety days." And here it is, a hundred and twenty days, and the work is not done. We don't... And here it is a hundred and twenty days and the work is not done. We don't, we didn't even give them a timeline.
Well, listening to what the City Manager said, they had, they knew it was July.
With the state of Florida, the Department of Economic Opportunity gave you 1.2 million dollars to do these seven projects by July 1. One of the very first things indicated to Techno Marine before they bid it, pre-bid, after they won the bid, is to look at the timeline that provided to us by DEO. Jett has that.
We never won the bid. Can I just speak?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're baiting now.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just saying, what we did in September was never awarded.
But that's, sir, I'm not talking about September. I'm talking about after you were awarded. I'm just responding to him, Mayor, and I'll be quiet. I don't wanna get tapped on.
Neither one of y'all should be, let, let, let the commission at this point unless.
I was referring after they actually won the bid, after they, after they bid it on it with another entity. They did, were selected as the order of this contract. Are you saying you wasn't? You saying y'all didn't bid on it?
I'm, if I could.
Y'all, I mean, we didn't do a resolution that awarded y'all the bid?
We're.
Point, I mean, point of, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may speak, 'cause I, you know, the motion was made, was properly seconded by me. Um, we can discuss it. At the moment, Techno Marine cannot communicate. It's a motion still on the floor. Now, once it has been made and seconded, we can open the floor for discussion among the commissioners. And then we call for the vote and make a decision. Now, my point is this. From the work that was enumerated, outlined, listed, you talking about painting, pressure cleaning. Put a little hammer and nail in a wood, in some wood. I, I just don't see, and, and also them knowing that by July, these projects have to be complete. We're not talking about building a, a, a four-story hotel. We're talking about doing some painting, some security lighting, um, some fencing. And all of this need to be completed by July. I just feel like we're tap dancing. Either we're gonna make a decision, uh, to terminate which, or we're gonna, uh, vote against the decision. But we need, we need to vote.
We are gonna vote when commissioners have the opportunity to get their answers to any question they may have and get clarification. Again, I think the majority of all contracts should have a timeline, especially when you're considering terminating any contract.
And I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, but why is it a point, why is it a problem now?
Commissioner Everett, I'm making a comment. I'm not asking for an, uh, an answer there. I'm just making.
Uh, Mr.
Under my comments, I'm just asking you to respect that and allow me to finish my comments and you have the same privilege.
And I appreciate you utilizing the gap. But we all have an equal right to give comments.
Absolutely.
And please allow me to rebuttal to that statement about dates.
When you get your.
Why do they wait, why did they wait until now? To moan and complain about dates? Because if I'm gonna take on a project and if I wanna be anal and on time and on the money, I'm gonna say, hey, I know the project needs to be completed by July, but I don't see dates to task. If I'm so task-oriented and I, and I'm, if I'm a stickler on being specific, I would've asked for dates long before the question of cutting the contract comes to the floor. So, they had a responsibility if they needed, uh, detail by detail, line by line, precept by precept, they should've asked for those dates. Our due diligence. I mean, they had a responsibility as well.
Yeah, I think we both had a responsibility, the bottom line. But they haven't mentioned dates. It's just my concern is that we're considering terminating the contract because of a lack of progress when there is no defined dates there. That's, that was just my point. I don't think it was their point. At least they're not arguing that at this point. I'll, I'll open it to others' comments. Anyone else have any, uh, additional comments? I'll, I'll, prior to our vote, and I know we have a vote, I would ask again, and I wanted to do this in the beginning, to get the City Attorney, uh, recommendation and the, uh, City Manager recommendation, so both of those can be factored in.
I think she had a question.
Yeah.
I, I'm totally confused right now. I mean, we, we should be asking, uh, talking to the City Attorney, Attorney Law.
Well, we would have, but there was a motion, a meeting that put on the floor before we was able to get a detailed discussion. And we had to then, since it was seconded, address, uh, that particular motion. But we will allow for that, uh, recommendation prior to, unless the City Commission have some objection to that, hearing the two recommendations from our staff. City Manager, I think it's pretty clear what your recommendation be, but I would like to, just on record, just for our information, to hear your recommendation as far as how we should proceed.
Mayor and Commissioner. We had an opportunity here to do some wonderful things and that's, that opportunity is still in front of us.
That's your recommendation?
No. I've said before I came in this commission chamber tonight that we had a timeline issue with Techno Marine. You can clearly see that timeline issue just by receiving quotes at this late date that your engineer that we have, who's qualified, if I'm allowed to read, Mayor, has said they've been asking for, for nearly two months. And I trust my engineer and planners because they've been with us in previous projects since I've been here. And my facts are, are not just mine alone. I'm not speaking just for myself tonight. I'm speaking for your contracted engineer on all your prior projects, some of them that is. Who, by the way, was a, a, a senior engineer for the city several years before, before I brought him back. I'm, I'm leaning on his information, our planners' information. They reviewed these documents for Techno Marine. They've been trying to work with Techno Marine as I have, not just the last two weeks to get information, but since the contract was signed. And they haven't gotten anything. Lo and behold, when the rubber start hitting the road, our fair City Attorney gets all these nice quotes in a week. I'm gonna say it again. I don't know this gentleman. They keep sending me somebody different every time we talking about critical issues on this project. Two weeks ago, they sent me someone different, brand new to the, to, to this project. Didn't know a thing. The gentleman that I've been working with, Mayor and Commissioner, since they were awarded this contract after they bid it on it, was Jack Talton, who has not returned my phone calls, who's barely been in touch with me, and knows a hell of a lot more information than this guy do about the entire process from A to Z. Now, that's no disrespect to you, sir.
That's.
So, I'm saying, so, so I'm saying, I'm saying.
It is.
I'm saying, Mayor, that as of Tuesday night, at the end of the day, this falls on your City Manager, City Manager's shoulders. I don't see any evidence beyond the twenty-five thousand dollars that they've done administratively for this project. That's just it. You gave me some quotes. You haven't done anything. We could've did the seawall fencing in February. It was a seawall installation. Painting, cameras, lighting. So, you know, and I apologize for taking all the time off from everybody else, Mayor. But I, I, I have to give you facts tonight and I just don't feel that, I just don't feel that, you know, we can move forward with Techno Marine successfully and be done. And he's already told you, they're not gonna be done by Ju- July 1st. He said August. For me and you and this city, that don't work well for DEO. Not when they're trying to work on my Phase Two, one million scope of work right now, right now. I'm working on that scope of work.
I think it was one indication he indicated August and that was a pier. You evidently removing that out, so that's just my recall.
No, it wasn't a pier. So, in, in, in my, in, in, based on his information, um, if we stay with Techno Marine, we will not hit that deadline. This will put your next million dollars in jeopardy, which DEO pretty much already knows about now because we had detailed conversations about how to move forward beyond Techno Marine. My recommendation is we move forward without Techno Marine, the best way possible based on your, this commission's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Salomax, send your recommendation, uh, City Man, City Attorney.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, as Chandler says, we do have a deadline on this project. Uh, we don't know if any extensions to that deadline are possible. What we do know is that both the deck and the pier have to have Corps of Army Engineers permits. Can't just go out there and start building them right away. However long it takes Techno Marine to get those permits will be the same time it takes Mr. Chandler or whoever other person is hired to do that. Plus, you have the time to hire that person. Then it has to come back to the commission for the commission to approve it. So, there's a re, what we've got here tonight is a, a recommendation from the manager and I just understand completely why he wants to do that. But no recommendation how to get this done on time. We've had some correspondents from the state saying that if we fire this contractor, they expect us to abide by our purchasing rules. Um, I was last, asked last week to change those purchasing rules so that you could waive them, so that you wouldn't have to abide by them. Because if you did, you'd never finish it on time. Now, whether the state will say, okay, abide by your purchasing rules also means that if you write a last-minute ordinance to waive those rules, that will accept you not abiding by your rules. Unlikely. So, as we move forward, after you terminate, uh, Techno Marine, uh, you will either have to put these out for bid under your own rules, which will never be done on time. Or if Chandler is right and the state does say, you can ignore your rules and just basically pick who you want, whatever you want, and the price you want. Then, the issue becomes the same for the two parts of the project Chandler said you won't develop on time. And that is the deck and the pier because you have to get Army, Army Corps of Engineers permitting. So, um, I don't think the city wants to get in another lawsuit. I don't think Techno Marine wants to sue the city. I think that there is a compromise here where you could authorize Techno Marine to do these things that they've outlined you, for you tonight, which is about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. They've already been paid a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which you may have trouble getting that money back. If you authorize them to do that scope of work, you know for sure these items will be done on time. And then Chandler and Robert Lambert and others can work on how they're gonna get the state to approve hiring these other folks that are gonna do the other parts of this contract without using our rules, or any rules for that matter. And, and moving ahead and getting that done by July. So, uh, my recommendation to you is to consider, uh, and if Techno Marine would agree to that, a modification of their agreement to require them to do these things. Basically, for the hundred and fifty you've already paid them, the twenty-five they've spent and another, whatever the amount is, they add up to what they have here today. Which all, yeah, all in all is, what, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of a 1.2 million dollar contract? All the rest of it then either is done or it's not done on time by virtue of whatever Chandler has in mind to make this thing happen before June 30th. Now, is that something Techno Marine would agree to?
I can speak to that subject and I'd like to speak to a lot of the questions that I was asked. But I'm not real sure if I'm able to right now.
That's up to the commission too.
I, I, how, how long we gonna debate with a motion on the floor that was second?
It's under discussion. The members of the board have the right to ask for questions to be answered by their.
I just had a question.
Professionals and by members of the audience that have an interest.
I just have a legit.
No, sir.
We, we're.
They just said the audience could speak.
Well, that's up to the mayor, not me.
Are there, are there any additional questions from the commission?
Let me go comment. That, uh, that, that was just my biggest concern. I understand, you know, majority of people just ready to get rid of Techno Marina. But I'm just trying to, I, that's why I just keep asking for certain communicators and a little more clarity because we're right in the, it's almost we're right in the middle of something. And if they can just either even complete Phase Two and then we consider moving on from there. But at this point, I just think that it's a, it's some, some, not enough transparency went on in this situation. And I think that's why we're here in this situation now. And I'll just leave it like that.
Vice Mayor Mervin, I'm gonna ask you, and you don't have to, uh, hearing what the City Attorney said and also your City Manager. Uh, I would ask, do you wanna consider modifying your motion to have Techno Marine finish at least at Phase One of the project, uh, which would probably total a hundred and seventy thousand and already received an advancement of a hundred and fifty thousand. So, the city wouldn't be owing them no more than about, I'm just using this as approximate, approximately twenty thousand or so.
Mayor, I made the motion and I'll stand with my motion due to the fact, Mayor, for one, listening to the City Attorney, listening to Chandler. I said, some of this stuff we just got tonight, also the pricing, the, not the pricing, but some of the dates. We, we're in a, a crunch time right now, you know? As, uh, Commissioner Hill was saying, Jack should be the one that came and gave us a little more. You know, I know you getting, you caught up, you know, with it, but.
I read every email and listened to every voicemail.
Okay, but right now, what can guarantee us that this, that it gets done? So, Mayor, I really, I stand with my, I stand with my motion.
Okay. Yes. Any, any additional questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, been properly seconded to terminate, uh, Tec, Techno Marine contract with the city. Uh, we heard both the City Manager and the City Attorney recommendation to put it into consideration. Uh, are you hearing no additional questions? The Attorney recommendation was basically to, uh, modify the contract to allow Techno Marino, Marine to finish the first phase of the agreement that they signed, which would basically mean those seven, uh, which would basically mean those seven tasks that we have in front of us that totaled approximately-
No, sir. It would be to modify the agreement so that they would do the items that they listed here tonight for the prices and times that they told you they would do them, and the rest of their obligations would be suspended under the contract.
In addition to questions? I call for vote, are you ready for vote, commissioners? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Everett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Walker? Mayor Bad?
No.
But that being is that Techno Marine will proceed, uh, with those strict dates, timeline, that this contract that they have should proclamably be finished by the end of July at the latest. We're gonna go into the, uh, city commission authority, uh, city attorney.
Okay, Commissioner, this episode that we've had over the last week really has brought to, uh, mind that, uh, you know, sometimes it's good to have a refresher on what everyone's responsibilities and authority is. And under the Constitution, uh, of the state of Florida, uh, the power of a municipality is set out in the commission of the city. And, and that power is set forth in the charter, and only that power that is delegated to the city manager only that power that is delegated to the city manager, uh, is the authority that the city manager has. So, our ordinances and charter says the city manager has certain authority and power. He has none beyond that. In the answer to your earlier question tonight, it depends on whether the city manager can pay out under a contract. Depends on what that contract says. If the contract says the, uh, contractor is entitled to draws at certain points in time, then the city manager can pay out those draws. If the contract doesn't say that, then the city manager has no authority to pay out those draws, and has to come to the commission. One of the things that we always trip over ourselves on is what items the city manager can do as far as purchasing and signing contracts, and what items the commission must do. The bottom line there is, the city manager has the authority to issue purchase orders to buy things that are not over ten thousand dollars. Any contract that imposes any contractual obligations on the city, whether it's ten dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, if it imposes a contractual obligation on the city, the city commission has to approve it. For contracts or, for contracts to be valid in the city, your city ordinance currently reads that all contracts must be reviewed and approved by the city attorney before the city commission signs and approves them. Several of our contracts in the last year or two, one have been signed without city commission approval, and two have been handed to the mayor for the mayor's signature without city commission approval, and have not had any review by legal.
Which, which contracts are you referring, Gary?
Well, the grant agreement we just looked at today. It was never approved by the commission.
What other contract are you talking about, Gary?
The one-point-two-million-dollar grant that we just talked about.
You said several con- agreements, which-
E D S A, E D S A contract.
That was, that was a part of the one-point-two-million.
Just because you have a grant for one, two-point-two-million-
It's part of the construction and building and design.
Does not give you the authority to go out and spend it. Every contract that you spend, any part of that one-point-two-million dollars for, has to come to the commission for sign- signature, and has to be signed off by me. So, whether or not it was one of the, part of the one-point-two-million dollars is irrelevant. Now, the city manager's authority is only that authority that is specifically spelled out in the ordinances and the charter of the county. If it's not in there, the city manager does not have the authority to do it, and the commission has to do it. One of the problems that this city is having is records retention. The records retention in this city is just dismal.
I disagree with that. What's your example of that?
Okay, my example of that is, on Wednesday morn-
Because I didn't know this meeting was gonna be about records retention. I wasn't prepared to speak on these, but-
It was on the agenda. Um, okay, Tuesday morning, I called over to the clerk's office asking for the grant agreement that we're gonna be looking at tonight. The clerk's office told me that the grant agreement had not been approved by the commission. Okay, so I asked for her to go down to the grant office to find out if they had a copy that was approved by the commission. Twice she went down there, and twice they told her they did not have any copies of it. So, I asked them to ask the state of Florida to send them copies of it, which they did not do. I then sent three different emails at three different times asking Mr. Chandler for a copy of the grant agreement. One time, he sent me an entirely different agreement. One time, he pretended like he didn't know what agreement I was talking about. And the third time, he just didn't respond to it. So, having been, I mean, this is really sad. I mean, anybody in the audience or street come, come into the city, and it is a public record that everyone can obtain a copy for, no reason has to be said for obtaining that copy, and it just has to be given to them. For the county attorney, or city attorney, to be jerked around, no other word for it, like this, to get the document that's supposed to be on the special agenda for tonight, was atrocious. So, I called the state of Florida. I said, would you please send me the copy of the agreement? The city doesn't seem to be able to put the fingers on it. The lady from the state of Florida says, I can only talk to the city manager to release the contract. She called the city manager. The city manager did not tell her to release the document to her, and she is now going through the public records request of someone that would have to go to the state of Florida. After hearing that, Chandler decided to give me the document that I found out later had been in his office since July sixth, and sent it over to me so I could read it. Uh, okay, that in and of itself, uh, shows that there is a serious problem with the way records are handled in the city. You have two sets of records. You have the records that the city clerk has of your minutes and everything you approve. And you call the city clerk's office, and she generally looks for those immediately and gives them to you. Then you have a second set of agreements that appear not to have been signed or approved by the commission that are either in Chandler's office or the grant's office. When you call that office, the people in that office immediately call Chandler and say, hey, should we give this out to that person or not? Okay, and-
Who, who told you that?
That's the common knowledge.
No, it's not.
Well-
Who told you that? Tell me the person, because that's not true.
I'm not gonna tell you that person, and-
Then you're not making crude statements.
Well, it sure turned out to be that way for me today. I asked for a copy of the E D S A contract. Clerk doesn't have it, which means it wasn't approved by the commission.
It was part of, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well-
Go ahead, no, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And I can't get a copy of it. Can I have a copy of it?
Can I respond now?
I'm not done yet.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I apologize.
None of that matters. Okay, that's all in the past. What we need to do in the future is to make sure that all contracts that have to come to the commission, come to the commission with backup, saying what they're for, for the commission's review and approval. Those contracts have to be signed by your city attorney, whoever you decide that is, before the commissioner, the mayor, or the vice mayor signs it. And those contracts have to be available for anyone in the community or outside the community to come in and ask for, and have those immediately given to them. That's the law in the state of Florida. To violate that law is a second-degree misdemeanor. So, contracts should not be kept in Chandler's office. Contracts that are validly approved by the commission should be chep- kept in the clerk's office in one central location with the custodian of records so that everyone can come in and get copies of those documents when they want them. This isn't a thing that you can or can't do, or decide to do something else. That's what state law says. And if you don't do it, you're subject to second-degree misdemeanors of a possible sixty days in jail and a five-hundred-dollar fine. That's just the law. That's how all cities and counties in this state do it. So, from now on, I would hope that all contracts, even if they're under ten thousand dollars, are reviewed by the city attorney, because that's what your ordinance says my job is. And I can't do that job, first of all, if the city manager doesn't tell me what he signed them, because I never see it. Secondly, all those documents should not be in his office. They should be in the clerk's office or a central repository for all the city's documents, and they have to be kept for more than five years and available for the public. And then you have to file with the state of Florida a permission from them to destroy those records. You cannot destroy any of the city records without the state of Florida's permission. So, uh, that's the way it needs to be in the future. You can get another attorney, if you'd like to pay another attorney to tell you the same thing, or you can just read it in the statutes. It's been that way for the last thirty years in the state of Florida. There's no change to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, City Manager, if you wanna respond to any comments you've made?
I was hired in April twenty fifteen. And when I got here, I couldn't even find the door in the halls on the restrooms in City Hall, much less a contract. Okay? In my first forty-five days, I paid out seventy thousand dollars in back bills because of erroneous ill-kept books in our financial department. The city lights were going off, City Hall's lights were going off. We only had nine thousand dollars in credit for a city. Period. Because we couldn't pay our bills on time.
Thought we were talking about public records.
Excuse me, sir, I didn't interrupt you. Sit back, relax. I'm gonna take you where I'm taking you. Beyond that, you had a city that had no record-keeping then, when I first got here. You had a city that didn't have a balanced financial process to do purchasing and spending, which I revised. You had a city that, Gary is right, you couldn't find the contracts anywhere when I got here. You had a city that had a reputation of being incompetent, unprogressive, that's a word tonight, and no faith from the state and federal level, none, nonetheless, the county. This city manager took it upon himself, on the first day I walked into office, I got a broom in my hand and a three-piece suit, and I started cleaning City Hall. Literally, cleaning it, because the paper was taller than me. Now, let me fast-forward you three years later. I don't keep any grants in my office whatsoever. When a grant agreement is awarded, I take that grant agreement, wherever it comes from, our contract, I scan it, and I walk it down the hall, I scan it twice to my Director of Community Economic Development, who keeps all our files in her office. Okay? I scan it, she gets an email, I get an email, she gets the hard copy. And I keep only scanned copies on my computer. Everyone's been in my office, ain't got no files in there. And that's where it's been for three years. Now, let's go back to the city attorney's timeline. I had to go back to my emails, I love emails, they keep me on, on point. I got an email on Thursday morning, I believe, believe that's Thursday, from our grant manager in Tallahassee. I didn't call her. Only time I talked to her is when she wanted the quarterly report on this one-point-two-million. She says Chandler got a call from your city attorney. He's requesting information with, uh, the agreement for the one-point-two. But I had to advise him, I couldn't talk to him. Now, personally, I don't care if she talked to you or not, we got nothing to hide. But I said, okay, I said, I'll tell you what. I know I have my scanned copy on file, I'll send it to him. I didn't tell her not to send it to you. I was trying to take her out the loop and say, hey, I'll send it. And I told you, maybe that was a misconception to what she told you back, but I said, no problem, I'll send it to him. Because again, I don't keep files in a file cabinet in my office whatsoever. I only scan the agreement and keep it on my computer. So, I emailed it to you, and I said, hey, Gary, got a call from D E O today. They said you gave them a call. They said you requested this document. I have this document, I'll, I'll email it to you, which I did. We didn't go through a back and forth on that agreement. Then you asked the clerk for the Techno Marine agreement. Then, once she gave it to you, which was approved by the commission, you then asked the question, did we approve the Techno agreement, which we all know we did? I had that on scan again. I don't have any files in my office. There is no grant on file in my office. I give you a key, you can go there now. We have one file cabinet- We have one file cabinet that we had designated for past and future and current grants. It sits in the director of community and economic development's office to this day. It's been like that since I got here. So, I have to say, no, there is no grants being housed in my office. I only keep the scanned copy that is sent to us. I don't have the originals. I don't want the originals. Ms. Adams, my director of community economic development, needs the original in her file, because there is a file on this project in her office. Now, beyond that, there is no practice of the city not having a proper filing system. Can't find it in City Hall, except on this particular incident right here, where we appeared to couldn't find it at the immediate, but it wasn't any slight to my city attorney. There were some miscommunications, some people didn't know where it was, even the city clerk said she didn't have it, and that's okay, she didn't have it. I had it on scan. I just emailed it to you, this took a minute, because I figured that staff had it. Okay. Beyond that, that was the timeline of how it happened, because the email backs that up.
I got an email right here, I'll read them to you.
So, no, Gary, now, you went on and asked me the question for some other documents.
No, I didn't.
You asked me for the two quarterly reports.
I had already asked your department for that, and they gave them to me.
Okay, well, okay, well, again, I didn't know you was going to, going to the department as well and asking them.
Only because you didn't give them to me.
Gary, when you was asking to me that question, I wasn't in my office at the time to give it to you. Okay? I was in a meeting outside my office.
Thought you didn't have it in your office.
I'm talking about my email, Gary. When I said I have files in my office, I only scan what's been sent to us and agree with the commission. I don't keep files in my office. I only scan what's sent to us and I hand it to the appropriate department. I don't have a file cabinet in my, let me finish, sir.
Chandler, all the emails were sent to the mayor, that he knows the sequence that occurred here.
Well, that's great, but also, you should also know, I don't keep files in my office, because I don't.
Well, good, because I asked you for it.
But that's what you said.
For four times by email, and I didn't get them until after you knew I was trying to get them from the state.
No, that's not true, I just explained it. Can I finish, please? Before I get tapped out? Because this city operates very well. Contrary to popular belief, I look at it every day for nine hours a day, every day. And the confidence that's in this city manager in this county, at the state level and even the federal level, is not comparable to anybody else that's sitting in this seat, and everyone knows it. And the fact that we would sit here tonight after almost twelve million dollars in eighteen months since I've gotten here to challenge who and where my integrity is and how I operate this city is appalling to me. Is appalling to me. But that's okay. That's all right. I accept that, I accept your critique. I don't have a problem with that. If there's some things that we need to self-correct, we'll do that. But I want to make it clear that in no way, in no certain terms, that we are not open, we are not transparent, we are not effective, in, in no whatsoever we are, or else no one would deal with me. No one would deal with this city. We wouldn't be in this magazine right here called Quality Cities. We wouldn't be in this, this month. So I'll take a direct slight to that, but I'll take it tonight, mayor and commission. And if there's some corrections that we feel we need to do, I'll accept that, because one thing I'm gonna tell you is, I ain't the most perfect guy in the world. But I think I've done enough here to sustain the trust of this community, this commission, and anyone else who meets me. That's my integrity you're talking about. So, in closing, again, we run a transparent city, and nothing of the latter should come out of this meeting portrayed to the community that it isn't. Because then you start playing beyond the reputation of me and the reputation of this city and this community, and then it stifles my ability to continue bringing in the economic development and funding that we received the last twenty-four months. So let's be careful about that when you come in here publicly and start stating things up to that level of a misdemeanor. Because that don't work well for me.
Well, then you should correct it.
And it doesn't work well for anyone up here, because I think everybody up here know my integrity. I've never done anything wrong, and if I have, it wasn't intentional, but I corrected. But let's be real careful how we define these things you call misdemeanors.
I don't, state does.
Well, how you applying it to this city and this city manager, that's unfair. Again, if, if it's critical, again, if it's something that you want us to self-correct, Gary.
Yes, I do.
Okay, we'll get together, because sometimes we can do things offline, and sometimes it works a little smoother.
But we're gonna be transparent, so we're gonna do this in public.
The, the, the point I was trying to make, most of this, we should and will cover in our, uh, commission city manager retreat. I was hoping that time would be a time.
That'd be a good time, yeah.
To do that. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate, these type of meetings, governmental bodies, it's open to the sunshine. So what we discussed, whether it's uncomfortable or not, it's just open to the public. Uh, you know, we, we have an executive branch, which is our city administration. We have a legislative branch, which is this city commission. And we have based a judicial branch, which is our city attorney. There's always checks and balances in each system. And however it was said, the bottom line is, there are certain responsibilities that each of these branches have, and there are certain, uh, responsibility to check and balance on each other. Uh, I don't think it's comfortable for the city, uh, uh, attorney to, uh, state what he feel is some shortcoming in open public, or the commission feel that the city attorney have shortcoming or vice versa between, between the commissions. So, we, we, we're gonna continue this at that retreat, hopefully, whatever shortcoming or whatever correction is needed, we can iron them out and work together and, and, and move our city forward.
Mayor, I'd like to comment again tonight, if I could, just shortly and briefly.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first of all, I received a memo from Mr. Chandler on Wednesday the eleventh indicating repaying the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not my concern if I can remove the failed contractor. I presented to you an option tonight where you're getting a bunch of additional work for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plenty of money left to finish the job, and all that stuff will be on time. I don't know what the problem with that deal is. Earlier this week, I sent a memo, or you got copies of them? They basically asked Chandler for the grant agreement. Please send me the quarterly reports you already submitted to the state and a copy of the signed grant amendment. Didn't come.
You've already stated this, why were we going there, go over?
I want you to make sure that you've got these emails.
I, we have the emails.
The next email was, again, please send me the quarterly reports and the signed agreement. There's a third email that says, again, Chandler, that was the wrong agreement you sent me. Send me the quarterly reports and the grant agreement. Finally, I sent you an email that said, I just talked to Demetrius from D O E. She mentioned she told you not to send me the materials I asked for, because you were the project manager. When she had called you, because you were the project manager, all you had to say, give Gary the materials he wanted. Why in the world does your city attorney have to go through these hoops to get a document that was important for us to look at for this discussion tonight?
Did you read my responses to your emails?
I did, and it said all kinds of stuff about you doing the finances great in the city for the last few years, which had nothing to do with our comments. You sent a response that you were real busy.
Why did you, I wasn't even in the office when you, I couldn't get, never mind.
Well, the point is, when you're not in the office, public records should be available.
We gonna move on to the discussion, comments, concerns of the city commission. I'll start with Vice Mayor Murven.
We down to discussions.
Comments.
Mayor, Mayor, I, I, I have none, I have none.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Everett.
Can I reclaim some, my mic, everybody else might work, and I, I don't hear me. Okay, you can hear me, all right. Can I reclaim some of your time?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, city attorney, you stated, um, there was an EDS and some contracts signed without commission's approval and, and none of your involvement?
There was an EDS contract, and I believe it was signed, and I believe the city paid about thirty thousand dollars on it. As far as I can determine, looking through all the city record, the city commission never approved that contract. I've never signed off on it. They did the work, that work has not been distributed by Chandler. I don't know what it's about.
So, can I ask this question? Speaking specifically to this agreement, Techno Marine, it did, our involvement with them, our relationship with them to this point was never officially approved, accepted by the city?
Yes, the city approved the contract. Now, let me just mention, on that contract, there are two versions. Both of them signed by the mayor. The city has one, EDS had another version. I have no idea what's going on with the records around here, and how the, the two of them could have two different versions signed by the mayor of the same contract.
And as city attorney, with the responsibility of keeping us legal, how long did you have this knowledge that there were two versions of a contract? Knowledge of city manager entering into agreements without commission's approval or the mayor receiving a contract and it being signed by the mayor without it first coming to the commission? You know, how long have you had this knowledge? Because to me, and I know I'm Johnny come lately, it just seems a little odd, maybe coincidental, that we're having these conversations now that we are talking about or was entertaining the notion of whether we should keep Techno Marine or whether we should keep, or whether we should send Techno Marine up the road and find someone else to do the work that, uh, we need done on the dike. And one of the things I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for transparency, the buzzword that we've used today, I'm all for that. Uh, but what I'm not for is waiting to meet, and I can be wrong, this is just an opinion. It, it seems as if we're having a, I caught you with your pants down kind of session, because there's a decision that is being made that is unpopular, maybe among you and my colleagues. Uh, because if it was a concern now, why wasn't it a concern before? And why is it the concern brought now? Because it makes me feel like, uh, some promises were made or something was gained in the process, and now it's convenient that we're going to have this whole session about commission's authority, uh, 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 city managers' authority, all when we're having a discussion about whether we should keep Techno Marine and roll with them or whether or not we need to send them away and get someone to replace.
Okay, first, I don't have a dog in this hunt, I could care less if you tech, if you, uh, keep your agreement with Techno Marine or go to somebody else.
It don't appear that way.
Well, well, hold it. What I am concerned about is that you're able to finish your contract on time, and you get your money's worth for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was paid by the manager in advance to Techno Marine. That's it. Now, after our meeting on Tuesday, the next day, the first thing I did in the morning was call the clerk's office, and I asked her, I want the grant agreement. She looked for, there was no grant agreement. I said, you gotta check the minutes going back a couple of years. She did. It was never approved by the board. That started me getting a little suspicious. Why is this agreement not approved by the board? Okay, so I started asking for the grant agreement, like you've already heard a couple of times. I was stonewalled all week until I got it Thursday night, email from Chandler, which was after he knew that I was up at the state trying to get it. I got the quarterly reports sent to me by one of his staff members that are attached to that agreement, but that first quarterly report said that one of the things that the city had done to fulfill that one point two million dollars was that they hired EDSA. And I said, I've never heard of the EDSA, I've never signed off on that agreement. So I asked the clerk, research EDSA.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
Okay, so we, so were we awarded the one point two million dollars or we weren't?
We were awarded the one million, one point two million.
I'm just trying to understand, I'm definitely not, not being sarcastic.
We were awarded the one point two million dollars, what happened?
What I'm missing, okay, we were awarded, so where I'm, where I'm missing it, uh, and is, you're saying the board did not approve what exactly?
Okay, here's the process. The board has to approve an application for a grant. That grant then goes through the process, and by the way, uh, Mr. Chandler is excellent, uh, in Tallahassee in getting you money. I believe that he is the best I've ever seen, uh, here in this city, maybe anywhere, in doing that for you. I really want to give him a compliment for that.
Well, at least you got one compliment, city manager.
Now, once they award the agreement in the legislature, staff in the legislature drafts an agreement. This one had to be thirty-one pages long, which contains all kinds of things that the commission has to agree to. That agreement does not appear to have ever been given to the commission for signature or approved by the commission.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Gary, I apologize. But when we got, I apologize, I don't want to cut you off, I'm gonna let you finish. When we got, before, when we got awarded through the session, the one point two with the other three projects, this, this project was fast-tracked, because we knew we didn't have one point two million. And I did something very unorthodox, I started asking for advanced payment for all our contracts. No city in the state of Florida can do that. I was able to do it. But when it got fast-tracked, D E O. needed several documents. Several of those documents were advanced payment documents, didn't need a signature by the commission, just needed us to fill out and start giving them timelines on when they thought we could do this work. One of those documents also includes a grant agreement, which was one of the preliminary grant agreements, not their, I, I, well, they call it the executional agreement now, which I didn't know, but that was part of all that package, just to get the money in, into the city.
So can I ask this city manager? So when it, so when the board approves the grant?
It's, it becomes, it becomes executable once it, once it.
So you can start.
Well, no, that, no, not spending. It says that you've been awarded the grant, it's executable, both parties agree to it, if I'm right, Gary? It says that you've been awarded the grant, it's executable, both parties agree to it, am I right, Gary? Both parties agree, and now we can go out and do a bid, and bring in a Techno Marine, or, that's what that means.
What that means is that has to be approved by the commission, and it wasn't. It was handed to the mayor to sign.
Okay, so, I, I, I just have a few questions, you know, and, and I'm, I'm still learning, I think. I, I wanted to say thank you for that, for this learning opportunity. Um, so, when, I, you know, I just have a question about, were any requests for payments made if we didn't have all of our ducks in the road? Commission didn't approve this or that. Um, were any requests for payment made, um, between?
Once we signed the techno agreement, once the commission approved the Techno Marine agreement, um, in, in, well, it started in December, we wrapped it up in January, then that gives Techno Marine the authority to start issuing us payouts for work they intend to do, which they issued us a early payout of one hundred and fifty K for bill design work and so on, for the deck and the pier, and that's what he was alluding to.
Did anything in addition to the one hundred and fifty dollars?
About that for a minute, though, when you look at the work that they actually have completed, it wasn't but about twenty-five thousand.
Right.
So, where is the addition of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in work? That shouldn't have never been extended to them, not in that amount.
No, ma'am, mayor, they, the payout was for a hundred and fifty for a lot more than just the twenty-five thousand dollars. They just haven't gotten to that point, because Jack requested that, that it would take a hundred and fifty to do the, 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 the design, the permitting, all of the other things. They requested that amount upfront, so that's what we, that's what the payout was. I, we didn't say, hey, they didn't say, I want twenty-five, and I gave one fifty. No, the payout, the invoice from Techno Marine was for one fifty, for all that administration.
Do we have that invoice?
Huh?
Do we have that invoice?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. We don't, we don't, we don't, when we're running a project, we don't.
The agreement that he was paying off of was never approved by the board. One of these days, our grant agreement should be approved by the commission. Okay, after that.
No, we're paying off.
Even if they.
We're paying off their agreement, Gary.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But, the point is, you can't spend any money under the agreement that the commission didn't sign, until the commission signs the agreement.
But can I say something, and I apologize again?
Now, just a minute. Their application for a hundred and fifty should not have been paid. First, because the grant hadn't been approved by the board, and second, because you didn't have any indication that they had done the work.
No.
You never paid.
We weren't paying them because they said they had done work.
Well, you never pay a contractor until they do the work.
Yeah, let me try to help you out here.
Now, you're not helping me out, you're just digging yourself in deeper.
January sec- twenty-second, Jack then came back a couple of weeks later, after you approved the Techno Marine agreement, and said, in order for us to get started, administratively, we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars upfront, in an invoice, to do all of that work. So I wasn't paying them for work they didn't do. They sent a payout to get started, and they said they were not gonna get started.
And guess what?
And start doing that planning.
Does not say.
So, that's the payout he sent.
The agreement does not give them the right to ask you for a deposit. And you have no right to pay the hundred and fifty thousand dollars to them under that agreement, especially for work that was not done.
We know.
No community ever gives a contractor money in advance of doing the work, until they've seen the work, and the contractor gives them a recent lease of lien for that work.
So, Gary, when we do resurfacing here on our roads,
Right.
and you look in those contracts, and they ask for, you know, the five percent, you know, and ten percent, and so we do pay out for upfront.
Saying if it's in the contract, they're gonna request a certain amount in advance.
This did not have that in the contract, and they did not do the work.
Did they request any additional money? Uh, after we got the one fifty app?
The work that they said that they did do, but didn't do?
After we got the payout in February, to begin the project, there were several weeks that went by, okay? And then I came back and said, Jack, you know, we need you to get to work now, if this is what it takes to get a shovel in the ground, as they say. And that was in January, because I said that my, my next quarterly report, and Jack agreed, that it was time they go to work and show some real renovations and repairs on the third quarterly report. And I said, fine. In the interim came another payout, and there was no work done, which we all said no to, as Gary said, we don't pay them out without the work being done first.
Brendan Burden, let me ask a question.
We did not honor the second payout, because the second payout rep- represented things that we know had not happened. So, the second payout, it was like, no, we're not paying you another payout until we see work.
But, but what I'm saying, can I just ask this? Was, was there any documents sent stating that task, maybe task one through task seven, were partially completed, a hundred percent completed, requesting and requiring additional funds?
That was on the second payout, and that's when the engineers, our planners, even our investors who walked out tonight, um, we all looked at that. Of course, it started from me, and I went, no, I can't pay out that amount of money, because you said you'd done some of that work, and you haven't done it. Now, we ain't talking about that tonight, but that second.
We didn't talk about what exactly?
That second payout that said they had did a certain percentage amount of work.
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking, and I was hoping that we could speak to the heart of that. That there was task one through seven, and certain percentages stating that it was complete, like security lighting, and all of that stuff, that was done, requesting, you know, additional funds, but I was on the dike, and maybe it happened overnight, I didn't see any security lighting, or any enhancements or additions done. Did, you know, I know the audience can't speak to that.
There was a second payout that said they had did a certain amount of work, and we know that wasn't true.
Parking lot?
We ain't talk about that tonight, and we didn't want to talk about that. Um, we're gonna keep Techno Marine as, as far as I know, so, you know.
Thirty-five percent complete.
Commissioner, let me, let me, let me say this. I've been here for two years as the mayor, and, and I think one of the reasons we are successful, or have been as successful as we have, I haven't interfered with the city manager, especially when it come to day-to-day operation. Uh, you kind of alluded to maybe motives where the city attorney was bringing some of these items up. Sometime what happened, uh, you hold off some points where frustration may build up, and you say, now, it is my duty and obligation to address these issues. Uh, one of the quotes that I like, and I, I quote often, you do not hire smart people to tell them what to do. You hire smart people for them to tell you what to do. But again, I went and talked about the checks and balances. We must adhere to that. The city man, the city attorney has shared some of his frustrations with me from time to time, on things that the city manager needs to follow certain protocols. I have questioned him on certain things. I never brought out any type of dirty laundry, although we look at a transparent government. To give you an example, uh, and, and I'm, I'm not gonna be long on this, I'm just gonna give you an example.
But you took my discussion, comments, and concerns, and it seems as if we cherry picked around my only, uh, you know, it seemed like when I've asked some direct questions, I haven't gotten direct answers.
Who, who you asked a question to?
I, I just, well, whomever can answer it. Uh, maybe the, the city manager, maybe the city attorney. Uh, when I asked a question about, uh, because we're, we're beating the hundred and fifty, but I'm asking the question of the additional monies that were requested for payout, for work that was done in percentages, like parking lot. The only parking I see on the dike is the parking that I saw when I came back home, or when I visited.
The city manager, answer that question, because you spent four minutes on it. I don't know if you understood, could you answer that?
It doesn't matter to me. If the commissioner answered your question, I think you did.
Listen, we're, we're in comments, I know we trying to go home, you know. I can bring another subject matter up, but we are beyond the motion and the vote. Okay? But, if you want me to expound on that, I'll expound on it.
But all I'm saying, though, Mr. Williamson, in all frankness, in all frankness.
I'll, I'll expound on it.
Let me, let me just say this.
You want me to?
In all frankness and fairness, I don't have anything to do tonight, and I, I, I really don't. And this city business is so important, that we don't need to just rush for the sake of, some of us got to go home.
I didn't mean that.
No, I'm not saying you, I'm just putting it out there. Because the citizens elected us, and one thing I am a proponent of, if you're going to start airing out dirty laundry, don't skip houses. Let's put it all on the table. So, Mr. Williamson, if you have additional information that you need to let us know, now is the time to let it be known. And that's under my discussions and comments and concerns, because Miss Mervin didn't have any. Once we.
And I'm using mine.
Once we commenced with Techno Marine agreement that was approved by this commission, um, Techno Marine came to me and said, we needed this amount of money to get started, which we did expend. And I told Jack, as I said earlier, that if this is the amount that takes us to get into the building, the planning, the design, all of those things that you were mentioning earlier, you know, he sent me the payout. And so, we honored that, because we wanted Techno Marine to get to work. When you start a contract, and they start working, they start sending you payouts, you know, I think this is the first time we actually got payouts like this, and I'll be frank to say, in three years, I didn't get successive payouts, it was just one bill at the end, as Gary said. But, once they got the one fifty, I said, we need to get the work. That was February. And I told Jack, I said, my next quarterly report must represent you being at a percentage rate of repairs and renovations, because that is our agreement with this contract. Jack agreed to that, with that first payout that he, he gave. Several weeks after that, probably maybe the second week of March, second week of March, Techno Marine sends me another payout. This payout was over two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. This payout that they wanted me to send to Tallahassee in my quarterly report, was saying that certain things had already been done at thirty and thirty-five percent completion. Okay, he wanted me to file that with my quarterly report. I didn't file that with my quarterly report, because it was a false document, because nothing had happened. And I also told Jack that I can't honor his payout. It was a payout. I can't honor his payout, I wasn't the only one that looked at it. Uh, I can't honor that payout, my finance department can't honor that payout, because what you have on this document says you have done a certain amount of work. And you hadn't. And had I filed that document, yes, Gary, you're right again, that would have been falsification of a quality report to the state. So we didn't honor the payout, and that's when all these meetings would begun. That's when we started calling Jack and saying, you need to come out here, we need to meet with you, we need to get this project going, we can't honor that payout. Jack never met with us. Then another week went by, he never met with us, he never called us back. Then finally, we met with somebody from Techno Marine, who had just got, been put, had been just put on the project, not you, sir, but someone else, who had no idea what was going on, on the project. So, to answer your question, yes, we got a secondary payout around the first or second week of March, that was requested for over, close to three hundred thousand dollars in work that they indicated was twenty-five to thirty, maybe thirty-five percent in, to the seven projects, which we all know wasn't true. So, that's the way the engineer interpreted it, that's the way our planners interpreted it, that's the way our finance department interpreted that payout, because it did go into our finance department as a payout, which means an invoice. And it had percentages on it, saying that this is where we were, and we denied it.
Did they sign it?
I believe it's signed, I have to pull it, I think it is, yeah. So, you know, again, um, you know, we can talk about contracting, and I think Gary has expressed some things of his concern. I'm certainly willing, willing to work on those things, and we can talk about them moving forward. Um, we are where we are today, this evening, and, um, let's just try to move forward.
I'm gonna pay dearly for bringing my wife out here for date night.
Okay, did you get your answer to your question, Commissioner Everett?
Uh, yes, sir.
Question, the answer to your question is they did sign that payout.
Okay, thank you. For work that wasn't completed, but was said to be completed. Okay. No, it says completed. Twenty-five percent complete, thirty-five percent complete, fifty percent complete. You know, state of Florida, I've been taking my, you, you know, I'm pretty decent with comprehension. It says complete, and on top of complete, it has percent. Seawall, fifty percent complete. Landscape, same landscape I saw before, I ever heard of a Techno Marine, fifty percent complete. Um, building upgrades, restroom laundry, thirty-five percent complete. Uh, petroleum pump, upgrade system, fifty percent complete. Paving and parking lot construction, thirty-five percent complete. Design and construction and plans, which is task seven, a hundred percent complete, and so forth, and so on, and so forth. And it was signed and notarized, and the amounts were almost three hundred thousand dollars, in addition to the one hundred and fifty, uh, that we beat a while in this meeting.
Okay.
I think we still on comments, Mayor.
All right, we're gonna move on. Commissioner Walker, you have any?
The CEO side of the show.
Commissioner Hill.
I just wanna let the citizens know that this is a time, it's times like this when we have to make decisions, but just trust and believe it will all get worked out. Um, at the end of the day, we have deadlines. Um, I still just feel that there were things that just, there's just a lot of things that I feel that some of the commissioners just didn't, didn't know. Uh, and at this point, I just really want us to focus on trying to get this phased over, and working with these particular contractors, to get this phase over, so that we can move on and get the job done before the deadline. That's my main concern.
And I'll close out, uh, are you, are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Techno Marine, I personally know nothing of them. I haven't met one person on their staff or in their organization. I just heard of their reputation through, uh, the reports that, uh, uh, Chandler had given us, you know, their wor- wor- worldwide reputation. So, it wasn't any motive, and again, I'm looking at timelines and a opportunity to at least complete the task that they feel they able to, and not forwarding or going past that, and extending the contract. I don't know we are under, in our obligation to have them do the remainder of the work. Again, I, I thank the city attorney, I thank Chandler for accepting the task of, uh, correcting some of this short-sighted that he may feel if he, he came up with. Uh, but these things needed to be said, it was a lengthy meeting, uh, again, dirty laundry is out there. I don't think there was any particular, uh, specific motivation for it. Again, as mayor, I've had some challenges that I've asked him, that if there are questions pertaining to day-to-day operations, sometimes it's good to get the city attorney opinion whether or not this is something that can be done or not. by the city manager, so, I'm not gonna list some of the concerns I had, but I think overall...
I'm sorry, mayor. So, at this point, where do we go from with Techno Marina? That's what I wanna know.
I think Gary can wrap that up for us real quick before we leave tonight, as I was asking there.
Okay. Techno Marine has a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of our work, our money. They've used twenty-five of it. They gave us a list of projects they could complete tonight. When you add all that, those projects up, with the twenty-five they've already spent, it comes up to about a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. Your motion tonight was to modify their contract to let them go forward and finish that job. And all the other work that has to be done in the Marina is gonna be done under Chandler's recommendations to move forward with whoever he decides and the engineer decides to use to do it. That's what the motion was tonight, as I understood.
I, I, I need to maybe correct that, I think what we need to do is put forth a motion. The motion that Vice Mayor, uh, Mervin, uh, put forth was a motion to terminate the contract. So, that motion failed by three to two vote. Uh, we need a motion now to proceed since it was the majority of the commission felt that, uh, because of timeframe, it may jeopardize our funding source. We decided not to terminate this contract, and I would entertain a least solicitor motion now that would allow, uh, Techno Marine to proceed with those areas of the hundred-and-fifty thousand expenditure that they hadn't completed. Again, it may end up being just a little more than that, maybe a hundred-and-seventy altogether, but it won't be too much more than what we already have paid. And then Chandler administration will continue the process of finishing this Marina. We're not gonna give them the contract for the hundred and, 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 I'm gonna say one, the remaining money of approximately a million dollars or more. That'll give us some little more clear guidance if a motion is put forth, uh, to the effect.
Mayor, the flip side of that is if Techno Marine doesn't agree to that deal, then we're gonna ask them for the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar back that they have not spent.
So, do they need first, agree to that deal?
We don't know if they're gonna agree to it or not, that's just an offer you're making tonight. Pardon me, sir?
Is he the one that will give the...
I think he may have to think about that for a couple days.
So, he can make that?
No, I, I can't make that, there's a lot I'd like to speak about, but I'm not, I'm not able to make that decision tonight.
But we can put forth that motion and let staff and the city attorney know that's what this commission desire is, is to negotiate a modified agreement to allow them to finish those, uh, steps that they have outlined, and only those steps in the contract at that point will be terminated. And we'll both, I mean, I guess...
Question.
Yes?
Um, do we need to... So, we, we... You make the motion for that. I guess, I'm trying to articulate what I'm trying to say.
All those things that are listed in the...
Do we, should we wait on whether or not, are we gonna, are we gonna make the motion contingent on it be agreed on? Agreed upon? The, the, the motion should read, I guess, we would allow them to expend a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and after that, contract terminates contingent on agreement between city and Techno Marine.
I think that would be appropriate.
And if not agreed, then we would seek our hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars that has not been spent.
Well, what was his purpose in common?
To try to answer any question we have. What would happen prior to that, we really, to be honest, we put a motion out on the floor, and it really superseded his ability now to kind of interact, because it was second. It was now in, in the debate between the commission. We really didn't give him a whole lot of opportunities for women to answer.
But Commissioner Hill, with all due respect, if you have any questions, I mean...
No, I wanna, I wanna hear what he has to say. This is why, this is why I need Gary, I wanna hear what he has to say, I'm just being honest, this is the point now.
I, I mean, he's here, but now, we can't say he didn't say anything, because he did talk a little bit now.
Well, I don't...
No, he didn't try, he did.
Well, I didn't hear it, no.
I mean, if we've already agreed to...
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I mean, we already agreed.
But he did talk, I don't know about him, he did talk, he did.
Okay, before we... Before we join the meeting, we're gonna allow him to talk, but do we want at this point to make, put forth that motion, or do we wanna wait till he have an opportunity to say a few words?
Thank you.
I understand that Jett has been involved on this project since September, but, like I said, I am the actual owner, and I've, I've read every email, I've listened to every, every conversation in our headquarters recorded via phone. I didn't come here tonight, but for one simple reason, when it comes to my desk, it's all about solutions. Don't point fingers, I don't blame. There's fault, blame sucks, that's what I was taught growing up, right? In my opinion, and it may be subjective since I'm standing on this side, this comes down to poor communication and lack of transparency. I've owned Techno Marine for fifteen years, in that time, we've probably worked on two-hundred public projects around the world. Yeah, I've owned Techno Marine for fifteen years. In that time, currently, right now, in the United States, we're working on, and we can show you backup, eleven large public projects, four in the state of Florida. And I've never seen anything quite like this, that's taken this path. How it got here, I'm not real sure. We, we went to bid, I, actually, I, we went to bid on a pier and a deck in September, that was neither entitled or permitted. So, how that could go out to public bid, I've never seen that before, because in order for it to go out to public bid, it has to be ready to be built. So, we won that bid, but we were never awarded that bid, because it was determined by our attorney, we have two attorneys on staff, and the city's attorney, that there's a incomplete, incomplete bid spec, and that what we actually bid, but was never officially awarded, can't even be built. There's no permits to build a pier that we bid. So, how it went out the public bid, I've never seen that before. Um, but that doesn't matter, so we, we were not awarded that, but we were awarded a design-build contract, um, in December, December the fourth, two thousand eighteen. With that design-build contract, we would start moving forward with designing the components that could be built. The stuff like the landscaping, the lights, the restrooms, the bathrooms, stuff like that. And we submitted a pay application for eighty-five hundred dollars, which clearly states in the contract, we never were paid. So, nothing kinda actually happened. On January the twenty-second, we were submitted a one-page addendum that we were asked to be drafted, and we list eleven bullet points, that there's no design for. There's, there's nothing, there's no design documents. Right? Because we were never given our eighty-five hundred dollars to start moving forward design documents. So, on January the twenty-second, from what I can tell, what I've been told, we were issued a one-point-two-million-dollar addendum for one-point-two-million dollars. For a lot of items, including, excuse me, sorry. A lot of items, including restrooms, building a parking lot that is not even permitted, buildings, you know, landscaping, what landscaping? I've never been on a project where someone asks us to improve a building, and there's not an actual design. Approve it how? You want us to put paint on it, you want us to... It's so subjective, you understand what I'm saying, is that, is that what the money is allocated for, you can't even build it. And there's no plans. We bring landscapers out, and they say, "This is what we would do, this is how a design build..." It, listen, it doesn't matter, because we signed it as well as the city, right? But this isn't how a design build contract works. I know how a design build contract works, right? A design build contract has a design, a parameter around the design, a master schedule, right? A cash flow schedule, and liabilities. As of right now, I don't know how, honestly, Techno Marine could be in default on this contract. I don't know how you could terminate. I think if you would have terminated, it would have been a mistake, because I don't know how we're in default. There's no timelines, there's no critical path, there's no cash flow schedule, there's no liabilities. I've never done a city job, we have fifty-million-dollar for bond with Zurich. I've never done one city job where I didn't have to provide a performance and material bond. But there's no bond on this job, even though a bond went out in the original bid, that there had to be a bond. So, I'm not sure how we got there. I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying, I've never seen anything quite like this. So, I've never seen, we, we, we basically have a five-page design-build agreement and a one-page addendum. That's it. There's no even insurance policies on this project, we have them, if we would have been asked for them. We had no idea that we could not, we were not pre-billing for work completed. If you look at the backup, we were billing for work to give to the subs, to give deposits to the subs, right? If, if it's in the AIA that is completed, that's just an oversight, and that's our problem. That was our oversight, because obviously, anyone can drive across that die, include me, and tell that nothing's been done, that people can see. If I was a citizen of this town, I would be upset too, because the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that was awarded to my company, doesn't get anything done in the midterm. You're not going to see visually anything done, because it's for core and permitting and peers. And peers that, I guess, I found out tonight, has been taken out, but there's no paper trail. I've never had anything, if the pier's not in the one-point-two-million-dollar addendum, then we should take it out. There's, there's a check and balances to construction that makes this run smooth. So, either, it doesn't matter if that falls on Mr. Williamson, ultimately, it, it falls on us, because if we were told that, then we should have issued a deductive change order, and we should have modified it. But if you look at the one-point-two-million dollars, there's nothing even in there about landscaping. There's no landscaping light item. So, it's just kind of like, we have one-point-two-million dollars, we received it, I'm assuming, in July of last year, and we haven't done anything with it. And we're getting a lot of heat on us, so here, here's one-point-two-million dollars, figure out where to spend it. Right? So, we get that notification in the middle of February. It's only been two months, we've had two weeks of non, of not working, right? We had two weeks of gathering qualified subs to come to the site, which wasn't easy, I'll be honest with you, to come to the site, to look at redoing the bathroom, redoing the lighting. It, it's very easy if, if a sub comes to, a qualified sub comes and they say, "Listen, this is the lighting and security package that we want you to bid. The bid comes back in a week." But we walk out there, and it's just a blank canvas, there's no direction, there's nothing from EDSA or ROD that says, "This is the camera system we want," or "This is the number of cameras we want," or "Where we want them." There's nothing like that. So, we actually have to get our subs to tell us, in their expert opinion, this is what we suggest. We gather that information. Right? We gather that information in two and a half weeks, because on the twenty-first of March, we were awarded the notice of receipt on February twenty-second. Right? On the twenty-first of March, which is only three and a half weeks later on the calendar, we submitted that back and said, "These are the three subs on each line item that we've brought to the job site, that we think are qualified, we've done our due diligence, we've pulled their insurance, we, we know that they're qualified financially, they're insured." It just happens to be that ninety-five percent of them are local, which is a benefit, because we always like kinda keeping the money in the community, if they're qualified, right? They're ready to go to work in two weeks.
What date was that?
May twenty-first.
You mean?
March twenty-first.
Okay.
With the backup.
So, as my engineers and planners kept asking for all this information for the last two months, and then you come and you submit another three-hundred-thousand-dollar app saying work was completed in beginning of March, don't you find that kinda weird?
No, I, what I find...
It was an oversight.
Yeah.
It was an oversight?
No, it's not, what I find weird is that you say your engineers have been asking that for us for two months.
Well, I mean, I've been asking Jett, I've been asking Jett that directly, as well.
I don't see that in the emails. Well, I see a lot of emails that...
Trust me, I've been asking that verbally, on the phone, in the email, I don't know emails you looking at, but I can, I can send them to you. Then I get a payout for three-hundred-thousand dollars from Jett, who is very adamant that I filed this with a quality report, which I haven't filed yet, because I don't have nothing to tell the state for this quality report, because we supposed to be fifty percent in at this point. But this is the payout that he sent. So, I don't know, I'm back to Commissioner Hill, and I don't wanna cut y'all off, sir, I apologize. Jett should have been here tonight, because Jett hasn't told you everything, along the conversations.
Jett has told me a lot, Jett has told me...
Apparently, he, he hasn't, because he left out three-hundred thousand dollars that he was requesting to get paid for, and there was no work done, and that was the first of March, and now you're saying, we didn't, we didn't even provide...
Hold on, you didn't even provide, uh, um,
subcontractors till April eleventh, so how you, this is your payout. So, how are you asking for two, three-hundred thousand dollars?
This was the payout for March twenty-first. Behind that payout is every single subcontractor.
You had, you, you had not had any...
That came to the job site, notice to proceed on...
You had not secured those contractors, no one saw those, no one, I didn't see it, I was asking for it.
We didn't secure those contractors, because we were told that the city has to sign off on those contractors. I actually have never, in my entire life, submitted backup, showing what the contractors are charging.
That's why I say, I wish Jett was here, because Jett came into those meetings, and everything that you're saying is completely opposite to what Jack Taughton said. Now, I know you guys work for the same company, and that's fine, and you gonna protect Jack's reputation...
I'm not here to protect, I'm here to find solutions.
But Jack, what you're saying is not what Jett told the city and our engineers and a group of us sitting at a table, consecutively, in consecutively meetings, and I'm not...
First of all, I'm, I'm not...
We operated on what Jack Taughton told us, that's what I'm saying.
It doesn't matter what Jett says, it matters what the contract says, and the contract is not clear. It's a, it's a, and maybe the attorney will, 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 will give his feedback on this.
So, where's the design contract?
The design contract?
Where's that, do you, where's the design contract?
It's a design-build contract.
But how long had, how long did you know that the contract wasn't specific? Because my thing is, it seems like it's, where, we, you know, if I was, if I was, you know, I'm not in the contracting business, but if I was a contractor, coming to a city to do a job, and I don't have all of my details, why do we wait at the moment of saying, "Hey, whether we gonna keep the contract or not keep the contract," to say what we did or didn't receive? It would look like we would have had those conversations a, a lot prior to this conversation to say, "Hey, you want security lightings, I don't, I, tell me where you want them." "Hey, you want a building improved, how do you want this building improved?"
Yes.
So, it seems as if those questions were not answered, or, I mean, not asked in advance.
Well, we didn't get the contracts until February twenty-second.
But it's, it's April approaching May, so why didn't you ask those questions prior? Because when you put completion percentages on there, you said in your statement to us that it was a mere oversight. But when we made a mistake, it seemed as if it's magnified. So, my thing is, how can you mistakenly say a project is fifty percent completed?
We're not mistakenly saying a project fifty percent complete.
It's notarized, it says that it's fifty and thirty-five percent complete.
It clearly states that these are for deposits for these contractors. If the contract actually had said, or we were aware, that you were not able, which, like I said, this is very familiar to us, if you were not able to award deposits towards these subs, then it should have been in the contract. On March the twenty-seventh, we got a detailed email that I'd be glad to share with you from Mr. Williamson, saying, "This is how I'm gonna have to start paying, this is how I'm able to pay for these subs." We would have loved to have seen that, because if we would have had that information on March twenty-first, we wouldn't have submitted a payout. Techno Marine is a debt-free company, I don't need your two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand dollars to turn the subs loose. But when you tell us that you need to spend the money, because you're gonna lose it, and you try to give us the money...
I never, I, I never told Jett that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Well, I...
I never told Jett that. The things you were saying is not what Jett said, I wish Jett was here tonight.
Listen, what, the, the issue I look at is that the hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars... Listen, what, the, the issue I look at is that the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, in my opinion, if, if we, should probably never have been paid. Probably half of it should have been paid, to be honest with you. Well, we were told to apply those line items, and I have that backup.
No, you were not told that. Jack sent us a pay app for those services that he said you should do.
Mr. Weepson, you revised the pay app, and I can, yes, you did.
No, we didn't.
You told him exactly where to apply those line items.
Let's, let him, let's allow him to just finish up. I want him to have an opportunity to address us, which he is.
We, we don't, yeah.
And then we can adjourn the meeting.
The, the, the issue is, is that the, the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, right? We were told where to apply that. I have that, I've seen those emails. Okay? We were told, we, we modified it three times and modified the backup three times to send to the state. I don't need a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I can, I can build you the entire scope, but there is no scope, there is no design. For one-point-two-million dollars and bill you in the end. But every city's different, every grant's different, depending if it's a big grant, it's a federal grant, it's a state grant. Some grants allowed to pay in advance. We didn't know that. I don't have a copy of the grant. There should be one as an addendum to the back of the contract, which, we don't have a contract either. We have a design-build contract and we have a one-page addendum that says here, spend one-point-two-million dollars. We have a design-build contract, yes, that was signed in, yeah, yeah. It was signed in December the fourth. That's it. But we actually didn't get the, and it was based off of a pier. It's a poorly written contract. It really is. It's actually probably the worst contract I've ever seen because it doesn't protect you and it doesn't protect us.
You wrote it.
You wrote it, you wrote it.
Who wrote it? No, the design-build contract, yes.
You wrote it.
No, it's a pre-construction services contract.
You wrote it.
Yeah, because you asked us to write it, because you didn't have one.
At, at this, at this point, again...
At, at this point, if I, what I want to see, and what I have told my staff, and the reason is, there's a lot of things that can be done out there that was not part of the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. If, if the, in my opinion, going backwards, and it can be our fault. If, if someone wants to blame, someone just blame me, I'm here, okay? I can take it. At the end of the day, if you're going to give us money and schedule was so crucial, we're not, we don't understand your schedule. We don't have, I don't have, a copy of the, when you're supposed to spend the funds.
Jack has it.
Okay, well, maybe he does, maybe he doesn't. I'm not sure why we're in April and none of the funds were spent, I, I, I'm not sure. It doesn't matter how we got here, the question is, is that we're here. And for the stuff that the citizens of the community want to see, that do not require permit, we can complete that work. We submitted that work three and a half weeks ago. We submitted every bit of that. We submitted it with a pay app because we thought that we were supposed to submit a pay app because we submitted the first pay app. If we would have had knowledge that we cannot pay you anything, see? Here's a copy in the addendum as an exhibit to your contract. You do not get paid TechnaMarine until you complete work. We would have not submitted a pay app. That's why as soon as we found that out, on March the twenty-seventh, from an email from Mr. Weepson, we immediately, within, I think it was nine minutes...
I'm sorry, did you check the emails from the engineer talking to Jack weeks well before that, telling him that we don't operate like that? Did you check those emails too?
No. I did not check those emails, but I, well, when we submitted, when we found out that you could not pay, you know what we did? The first thing we did, our attorney says retract, retract the pay app. We can't take that money, we don't need that money. Just have them approve the subs and we'll have the trades out there. Because if you're actually waiting for stuff to be done there, it can be done.
Well, he did, you did indicate in your report to us that you're ready to put the shelve in the ground, that mean you're ready to begin to build something that resonates and...
Since March the twenty-first.
So...
I think it's just communication. Listen, I'm just telling you right now, forget about Jack, okay? You may never see him again. Your contract's with TechnaMarine, it's not with Jack Taughton. You're looking at TechnaMarine. I'm the only shareholder and I'm the one that has the final say. And I'm just telling you right now that there can be people out there, within the next two weeks, working, completing these tasks. Right? They could have been out there already, but we gave, we got issued a cease-to-stop working order. We don't need any of your money. We'll get your money in the end. We're a financially stable company. But at the end of the day, moving forward, I don't think this solves the problem. Because fundamentally, the contract needs more transparency, it needs more details that not only protects us, but protects you. If we can't finish by July the first, then you should have liabilities on us, Mr. Herr.
Attorney just stated, you wrote the contract.
No, we wrote a pre-constructions contract. It's a pre-construction...
No, you wrote the contract.
All the contracts that we have, you're coming back.
You wrote it.
It's a pre-construction...
So how can you then turn around and say that it wasn't written properly?
Yes.
If you wrote, the attorney just stated, now, we've been using him as a very credible source this entire meeting, and we've appealed to his advice, he just stated, you wrote all the contracts.
Yes.
So how is it that you wrote all the contracts, but then in the meeting, they were poorly written?
Does everyone, well, listen...
That don't protect, what company go write a contract that don't protect?
This goes back, this is a perfect example of communication. Can, can everyone look at, can everyone look at the, the December the fourth? You do? Okay. If you flip to page five, right? If you look at the top, this is simply a pre-construction services agreement. You see the title? It's not a construction contract. Right? Okay. No, December the fourth, two thousand seventeen. You have it, right? Sorry, there's a lot of paperwork, I just want to make sure.
We got January twenty-second.
No.
So you wrote two contracts, right? Correct? Hello? You wrote two contracts, right?
We wrote a pre-construction...
Pre-designed, then we came back and you wrote another contract. You had two contracts with us.
On...
Same project, but...
On December the fourth, we wrote a contract, a pre-construction services contract. But if you look on page five, and from the communication that I got, the reason that we wrote this contract, and here again, I've never done a city contract when we actually provided the contract.
The January twenty-second contract that you all wrote and signed is entitled Contract Agreement for Design-Build Services. It goes through one through seven tasks. The price for one through seven was one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Yes. Correct.
You wrote me a memo a day ago...
Right.
Saying that one was free, three is pretty much done, costs twenty-five grand.
Right. The, 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 the issue is...
Then you wrote me, then you wrote me a letter saying, this is the prices we will do the bottling things for.
Correct.
I think it was, what, a hundred-and-sixty-five total, somewhere in that neighborhood. All we're trying to do tonight is get a motion by the board...
I understand that, but...
To have you go forward with the one-sixty-five.
The issue is, is that...
If you do that and do a good job on it, and the city likes the work that you've done and it's done in a fast manner, they will probably use you again on all the rest of the stuff. Maybe.
Well, the, the, my question is, is that this contract for design-build services with the backup is just for, is not, has anything to do with the upland improvements? Everything, one through seven, permitting associated with services, bathometric, photography, essential plans, data...
That's why we put a hold on that contract.
Let me put a hold on it, yeah.
We sent you a stop-work order on that contract.
No, 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 no. Listen, that, we have, there's two things. On January twenty-second, we wrote a design-build contract for these seven services.
Right.
Okay? Just these seven services.
That's right.
And it is everything to do with the fishing pier and the deck.
I understand that.
Which has been pushed off until phase two.
Correct.
So this January twenty-second contract means nothing right now.
Which is why I sent you a cease-work on that contract letter.
Correct. Okay?
All right.
So we've stopped work on that.
And you sent me, and you sent me a letter saying, the work you've done on that is twenty-five thousand.
So we've stopped work on that contract.
Right.
On February the twenty-second, we were issued a one-page, that we issued at the city's request, a one-page document, and we were told to break these one-point-two-million dollars out into these line items. Everyone has that?
I've got that, I've seen that, that was never approved by the city.
Yes. We, we, we submit a design, we just, we just submit a design-build pre-construction services agreement. That, that pre-construction services agreement is executed by the mayor. We submit an eighty-five-hundred-dollar payment. We never got paid. All right? On January twenty-second, we submit a design-build contract.
No, sir, I'm not sure you submitted a bill for eighty-five hundred dollars.
Well, I've seen it, I don't know, maybe, maybe it comes back to communication.
I asked the other day if you had, if the city had paid that, they said no.
The city had paid it, yes, but did you, you did not ask if we had submitted it.
I don't think it was submitted.
Okay. Well, I can find out.
If it is...
Right.
Did you do that work, did you complete it?
The work? Yeah, if you read through the task, we did.
Okay.
Okay. So on January twenty-second, we issued a contract for agreement for design-build services for everything associated on the pier and the deck.
Yes, we just went through them.
Which you're not going to see anything, probably within the next year, regardless of who you hire on that. Because that's all up to the core, right? Okay. On February...
Agreed, that's why we said stop work on it.
Yes. On February twenty-second, on February, on February the thirteenth, you submitted an addendum giving the entire one-point-two-million dollars...
Sir, we didn't submit that addendum. TechnaMarine submitted the addendum after they came back to me and Gary and sat down with C Diversified and said they can do the entire project. That's when we came back and drew up the secondary agreement. We did not submit an addendum, you did.
Yeah, but...
Need Jack here.
We don't need Jack here because I read the emails and I see the email where we were requested to draft this up and we signed it and we broke it out.
That was after we met with me, the city attorney at his office, and you said you could do all that work.
Right. So we submitted an addendum for this work. This is all we have, no schedules, no dates.
Is it signed by us?
It's signed by Chandler.
Is it signed by who?
It's signed by Chandler.
I gotta see that.
That's the addendum too.
The issue is, is that of that one-point-two-million dollars that was signed two months ago, there is no design, there is no anything that gives us direction. That's why for six weeks, we worked on the design and worked on having the trades come out for that project.
But you said that's what you needed for the secondary part of the contract that said you can do all the work. We didn't do that addendum. You sent that to us because you wanted to make sure you had that in your file saying that you could do all the work at one-point-two-million. That's what you sent to us, we didn't generate that.
No, you asked for it and I can provide documentation Monday morning that says that you asked for it.
Okay, please, if I could just have a motion...
I also have an email where we were asked if we could go ahead and take six-hundred-thousand dollars in advance.
On a modification to the contract, as I requested before...
I'm just saying.
Then we can move forward, at least on that part that we agree on.
Yes.
Any future parts will have to be subject to future agreements.
Yeah, but on TechnaMar, for TechnaMarine's behalf, I will submit that, whatever, I will respect what you decide tonight. And I will res- submit that to my general counsel. But in my personal opinion, I do not see where we're in default for you to modify our contract.
Sir, I'm not saying you're in default. I'm asking the board to give me permission to modify our agreement, to specify the things that the city wants done before June. That's all I'm doing.
I would love, I would love that.
That's what I would like to do.
I would love that.
And I will write the agreement, and I'll have all the things in it that you said were missing.
Yeah, because in my opinion, and it's no disrespect to anyone up here, I'm telling you, in my opinion, if the client doesn't know what the client wants done and the client doesn't have a, a specific design on what he wants done, it is very difficult for us to kind of assume what's done, uh, what is to be done. And could we have done it better? Yes. Should we have done it better? Yes. But at the end of the day, I'm, I'll say what I've said again. The, the work that we've been released to do, probably hindsight, which is always twenty-twenty, right? Probably should not have been released because that actually doesn't show any on-site improvements.
Right. We, we're gonna entertain a motion to the other thick, but I would like to see city administration and our city attorney work with you and give a deadline and see if we can accomplish an agreement that could finish the remainder. If we can't, then we have to move on. But in addition to that first agreement we need, the first motion...
What, what did you need?
Repeat the motion again, I need Commissioner to listen because one of y'all needs to make the motion.
Ah, ah, that's why I said, said, go ahead.
I think it should be a motion for me to work on a modification to the TechnaMarine agreement to accomplish those items that they gave us prices on today within the timeframe that we need them accomplished.
I'd like to make a motion for the attorney to be able to work with TechnaMarina to meet, uh, to modify the agreement so that we can meet all the deadlines, especially with the pricing, the... everything that's in the contract. With a, with...
The things that were submitted to us in the two-page letter...
The things that were submitted to us in a two-page letter.
Laying out the pricing.
Optimizing the pricing and all the requirements and the deadline. That's my motion. Okay.
Can we get a second?
Walker is seconding.
Okay.